Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Land Use Workshop Number Four meeting. Before we get started, we have a tight agenda today. We are scheduled to go to 3:00 and we're going to have to stick to that because some of us have tight meetings. So the plan we have right now is 30 minutes for three items. Number three, which is the workshop policy synthesis, we spent 30 minutes on that and then the 12-month work program to address the B.O.C.C. policy initiatives, 30 minutes on that, and then outreach, 30 minutes on that. And any questions will be short because some of us have to be at other places by the time we finish this. So if that's agree upon, that's what we're going to do. So I'll turn it over now to Mr. Merwin for an overview.
I'll actually ask Lucia to give an overview.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're here before you in workshop, Land Use Workshop Number Four, a series of workshops that began with an umbrella of sustainability, looking at fiscal sustainability, land use, and then infrastructure sustainability in the areas of economic, environment, and social infrastructure. We have looked at policies in each of those areas and as we promised to you in the last workshop, what we're bringing back to you is a synthesis or compilation of everything that we've heard in a policy format. That document is attached in your backup. As well, one of the other pieces that we are bringing back to you in response to those policies are the initiatives that both the Planning Commission staff and the Administrator staff would undertake to address some of those policy initiatives that you've already described. I will say that there was a document sent out yesterday at about 1:00 that was a correction to the county administrator's 12-month work program. It added a couple of items that were overlooked. One of them was that the water, wastewater impact fees and the AGRF would be included in part of the impact fee discussion that's in there as well. There's a piece on CDBG and HUD revitalization programs that would be undertaken. And then the last two items were the RP2 and Wyomma Village to land development code pieces. So those were the items that came before you. So for today, what we have intended to bring is, in addition to the policy piece, the work program piece, there's a conversation about the outreach. And you have asked, how are we going to go about outreach? And so Melissa's here to speak a bit about the outreach component. I think what's really important to understand is that as the outreach moves forward, there will be work that the consultant will be doing, and consultant's been watching our workshops and reviewing the conversations, to really frame the outreach in something meaningful so it's not testing each of the policies that you have before you, but framing that in a way that then provides us impact on public sentiment. One of the other pieces that needs to happen is the fiscal impact and reality of the policies that are before you, and some of the work that Tischler-Bice will be doing will be addressing those as well. So I think for today, especially on the policy synthesis, what we would offer is as we go through them, one of the, I think, kind of the validations that we need, is there something missing? Are these policies worded as you have indicated before? Because then that document will be turned over to the consultant. The consultant then will work, I believe we can bring that back on February the 22nd, I think that is the date for the next workshop. And that will give you then the opportunity to see kind of how that outreach program is going to look and what the engagement conversation will look like and who they're engaging with. So having said that, I would ask Melissa then to take on the policy synthesis discussion and then we'll follow on with more detailed conversation on our work programs and then the outreach.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. As Ms. Garsis described, the pages following your agenda are a synthesis of what has been presented at the workshops and your feedback back to staff on those topics. And we've tried to integrate them into the different boxes on the sustainability matrix, and that is the organizing principle behind the document. So really, our goal out of this section of the agenda is simply to get your feedback on whether or not we have captured these policy directions accurately or if there's anything that's missing. So perhaps we can go through them by section, the first being environmental sustainability, and if there are any additions or changes, if that would be appropriate. So that's the first section is environmental sustainability, and we covered fiscal, land use, and infrastructure policies as it relates to that. I was not planning to read them through word by word, but if anybody has any comments, please let us know.
Any questions on environmental sustainability? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Okay, just quickly, since this is our chance to make this, the document that goes forward, and let me just say that I'm very pleased. I think that this really captures a lot of what we've been saying, and I'm very optimistic that this is going to help us craft land development code and comp plan policies that will bring about the change that the voters and the citizens are asking us to do. So I see just a lot of great work here and want to commend both halves of this partnership for a job well done as far as I'm concerned. The only, oh, actually, I'm just going to make one comment here, and that is, there's a lot of incentivizing growth where we want it and utilizing a fee and tax structure in the beginning to incentivize fiscally responsible development. And I will say, a time or two through this, that it's great and best when we can do what we need to do with a carrot, but there's sometimes we need to use a stick too, and we have to have both sides of that. So we have to start doing the things we want and stop doing the things that the time has passed for them and that is no longer appropriate to do. So, you know, possibly on the last bullet of the very first section where it says utilize a fee and tax structure to incentivize fiscally responsible development, to me, I would say, and discourage costly sprawl-style development or something along those lines. So that we're going to use taxes and fees to incentivize, but we are also going to possibly raise fees. We're going to lower them where we want development to go, but possibly raise them where we don't and thereby do some discouraging things. It's the only comment I have.
Mr. Logerman, you recognize. And remember, folks, we're going to stay on 30 minutes on each one of these. We're not going to go over it today.
Thank you, Chair. To your point, I think that to discourage unsustainable practices or growth trends, while I too believe that offering ways that we can incentivize an opportunity to get what we need, it doesn't remove the responsibility of making sure that if we have someone who wants to actually build in an area that we can't afford to service, there is no reason to offer any incentive in those circumstances for any reason, because it does make it unsustainable on the long term. And that requires us having the fortitude to say no or having a fee structure in place that actually requires it to pay its way. And to the comments that we've heard over time, you know, new development has to pay for itself. And we've also heard that if we actually charged what it costs to develop in that area, you know, it wouldn't get built. Well, if that's the case, then that's the case. So we do need to get real about what our costs are and make sure that we incorporate that in our structure, whether that be discounting, waiving, incentivizing, and also fee structures associated with it. So as we've discussed raising fees in the past, I don't like it any more than anything, but taxpayers don't need to pay the bill for us. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. The next section is economic sustainability, and again, we had sections on the financial policy, land use policy, and infrastructure policy.
Commissioner Smith?
Just a few quick comments. Okay, economic sustainability, financial policy, and economic sustainability, like the third bullet from the bottom where it says, "Consider policies on timing and phasing of projects with infrastructure provision." I would write that implement. I've worked with a lot of comp plan stuff that says consider and maybe and may, and I'm hoping we have more implement and shall teeth in the next phase. So I would say implement policies on timing and phasing of projects with infrastructure provisions and jobs and services, because I think we need to consider timing, not only for infrastructure certainly, but also for whether or not the jobs and services are there to support residential development now or not. And maybe later they will be, but if they're not now, then well, that's a timing consideration. Let's see, flipping to nodes and accessibility, I was hoping that there would be more of what I know Commissioner Overman and Commissioner White and several commissioners have talked about connecting the grid. So possibly, you know, where it says, the second to the last bullet, reduce reliance on arterials and collectors for neighborhood trips, it might be appropriate to say and connect the grid or something along those lines there. Let's see, the next section, fiscal policy, I'm just going to say what my comments are and let the next person. So, well, kind of again, I guess up at the first section where it says, third bullet, focus growth, designate different scales of mixed use, activity centers that improve connectivity and all of that, reducing trip lengths, that's great. That's the carrot, focusing growth, designating mixed use. And the stick would be discourage commuter subdivisions, bedroom communities that will require long distance. I think we should say that clearly and possibly hopefully bring back land development code, comp plan policies that will say, yes, we want to direct and encourage focused growth, but we also want to, what we don't want anymore, we want to discourage to some extent commuter subdivisions, bedroom communities of development that will have long trips and be adding traffic to the roads. That's it.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. And this will be, I just don't know exactly where it goes, and we've been talking about it, but in so many ways, but I would like a really clear notion that affordable housing outside the urban service area is inherently unaffordable and that we just don't even go there and think about that.
All right, Zornita, continue.
Okay, great. We'll find a place for it.
May I? I'm sorry, one more thing is just that, to a point that Commissioner Overman's made in the past about the grid, and I've talked about the grid a lot, but I like the small block size as something that I do think that that is a good way of thinking about making more grid, because these long blocks, again, didn't make it so that you don't really have a grid.
Sure. Okay. Great. Then the last section is social sustainability, and we'd welcome any feedback on that.
I don't see any, no. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, sir. Two points quickly. The last section, infrastructure policy and sustainability. I would like to see more about implementing Vision Zero and providing greenways and trails, paved greenways and trails. I know that we talk about adding to ELAP here, and I know we have, we have a lot of good stuff already in our comp plan and in our land development code. We're not starting from scratch here, and I'm not suggesting that this is missing in our county, but since we did talk about adding to ELAP and we are kind of, you know, formulating this framework, I would add that to add to our paved greenways and trail system and implement Vision Zero, safe, Vision Zero policies, thinking about really separated, the next stage of safe cycling and pedestrian infrastructure is going to be separated, buffered bike lanes and sidewalks. And one more thing is to, again, in infrastructure policy and social sustainability, to discourage development that would overburden roads and to discourage design exceptions or to, you know, to look at those more carefully in some way as we move forward. I think we've been kind of chafing against those at the board, zoning by zoning, and looking for more teeth to put into the process by which design exceptions are granted or the kinds of criteria we should look at for allowing roads that are substandard in our county just to, you know, for whatever reason. That's it.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of points, because I'm not sure, this is like, this is a lot of information on a couple, four pages, and it's kind of hard to figure out where everything should go in its right place. But I was concerned about identifying nodes. That's not exactly in here anywhere. Is that, you know, I know you talk about it, the nodes and accessibility, but where are they going to go? I mean, you mentioned the I-4 corridor, and that brings up the other subject of what about the I-4 corridor? I mean, that's a key decision point for this board. When are we going to say yes or no, we want to do the I-4 corridor? I think that has to be done before this plan can really become a full plan. The other is...
Commissioner Merman, can you stop right there? And let me look at Ms., either one of you addressed that, because that's an important one.
So Commissioners, further on in the work program, what we're actually saying is that we would begin an initial analysis of the three nodes that have been identified in the I-4 corridor. So the three that were in the ULI study, we would begin an infrastructure, land ownership, and feasibility of development of those areas, not moving in a direction of plan amendments yet, but again, being thoughtful and thorough about what we have to work with and what the requirements are in each of those. So if you moved ahead and approved that element of our work program, we would then begin that initial technical analysis of the three nodes in the I-4 corridor.
Okay. May I follow up?
Sure.
Thank you. Because I see nodes in your section, I see nodes in yours, and are these two going to be, the work plans going to be combined at some point?
I think it's appropriate that we do that.
Okay. Because when you see, when you see different things kind of straddling the fence of other areas, I think it just needs to have its own little place, especially an important topic like nodes, I-4 corridor as a key decision point. And then that gets back to another key decision point is, how and when does the reality of population growth get incorporated into all this? What you, all this as far as sustainability, because that, the population growth is what kind of our budget people use that to project out, and I think as far as sustainability is concerned, that's really a key point.
I mean, my response to that would be that I believe inherent in this policy document is an assumption that we're going to continue to grow. We're going to continue to grow towards the projected populations that the Bureau of Economic and Business Research has projected for our community, and this is, this document is talking about how we're going to focus that growth, where we might try and direct it to places, new areas like the I-4 corridor. So it's more focused on the how and the where as opposed to exactly how much, but I think in my opinion, the underpinning of it is that we're going to continue to grow and grow towards those projections.
So then what about going outside the urban service area?
Well, I think...
That's a key decision point. I mean, we all have to, I mean, it's the elephant in the room always, and how are we going to address that? What's the policy going to be?
Well, I think how this is, this is talking about focusing inside the urban service area with the exception of strategic expansions such as the I-4 corridor. That's what's articulated in this policy document.
Okay, so that's the only, only area outside the urban service area that will be addressed?
I mean, obviously, we're also working on the RP2 and the Wyomma Village areas that are outside the urban service area. We don't have specific policy language on those two areas because we're looking, studying them through a separate process.
Okay. Then my last question, and Commissioner Smith actually really started and got my wheels turning, rezonings. Yeah. So like affordable housing policies, if we believe, I had to write these questions out last night while I was reading all this, if we believe that, we do believe affordable housing is important, can we forego a rezoning and just entitle properties by right? Can that be in a policy?
I think I would look to the county attorney's office to advise us in that regard.
But I mean, to be considered. I don't think we have to make a decision today, but can that be? And also, if the comprehensive plan allows a higher density within a certain zoning, why do we have to always go back for rezonings? Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying, and I think that's something that we would need to look at.
It's a decision point.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Okay, we're starting to read each other's minds, because I'm like going, wait, 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 wait. Actually, on page three, where you're talking about nodes and accessibility, there is the one line that talks about, consider strategic expansion of areas of I-4 corridor, but, and we've talked about density and the fact that we have not met our density goals. And, you know, we alluded to, you know, carrots and sticks before, in the sense that in order to encourage the density that we need, we have to hold true to the density that's required and then have a robust TDR program for enhancing or increasing those densities to meet the certain goals, like affordable housing and other things. And where we can waiver, you know, the impact, those zoning steps or a few of those things to accelerate it and allow that lot or that piece of land to be deemed affordable for perpetuity, that would solve a lot of problems if we could do that. But what I didn't see in here, and it really is actually on the same page, under infrastructure policy and economic sustainability, and then it also follows through on the social sustainability page on page five, where we're talking about infrastructure and policy, it's there where the Vision Zero goals that we've adopted, at least at the MPO level, have become more important and more emphatic, because we have to be able to have the courage to stand up to FDOT that says, no, it has to be this way, when it doesn't promote safety of our citizens in communities. The, you know, the required distance between intersections that permit unsafe conditions for citizens is not something I think this community wants to tolerate much more of. And it is what has allowed our arterials and our collector roads to become enormously unsafe and allowed them to continue growing, where that seems to be the only way we connect neighborhoods is through arterials and collectors instead of through community streets. So I don't know where that goes in here. I'm not sure if it goes under infrastructure policy and social sustainability. It might be something there. But where FDOT's design specs or where our design specs conflict with Vision Zero, Vision Zero has to win in order to make sure that we remove ourselves from a car-centric community design that requires our citizens to live in a car and to get from one place to another safely, because that's the only way they can get there. I mean, they will literally get in the car and drive across this intersection to a store on the other side of the street, because it's not safe to walk across that road. And that's not acceptable. We have got to stop allowing that to occur. And if it takes longer to get somewhere, it takes longer to get somewhere. But I think it's more important that we protect our citizens' lives than we protect their And I do respect that we, people have to get where they need to go. I don't, I'm not that ignorant of the issue, but I do think it's critically important that we have somewhere in our infrastructure policy that Vision Zero wins over specs, and if we have specs that support Vision Zero inside of Hillsborough County, that we stick to them, and then we have enough teeth to fight with other entities, with the state, you know, in order to make sure that our communities stay safe. And I think that's where, it goes on page five in that section, and I'm not seeing it pretty much anywhere else, but I think that's important for us to adopt.
Okay.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. And this maybe falls more under the environmental, but the I-4 discussion really prompted me on this. I'm not necessarily a big fan of what the ULI recommended. I don't see that potential there, just because it's on a big, super interstate. It doesn't strike me as being a place where you develop nodes on. I do see opportunities, perhaps, I think, to the north of I-4 and to the west of 75 in that airport executive area, and that's quite a lot of space to start to think about, to focus growth in. But the other concern I have along I-4 that I want to make sure starts getting into part of this is that there's a 25-minute film out, I think it's called "The Thin Green Strand", which talks about the fact that I-4 goes across the entire state and has become a demarcation, now a wall that can't be crossed by wildlife, so that we're having actual biodiversity issues now. I think in the future, we have to, that FDOT is going to have to think about, and we have to think about as it gets redone, to have that road raised as they have at Alligator Alley. I also think we have to designate and look in our county where we can have a wildlife crossing. There's only two opportunities, and one is right there between 75 and Plant City, is one of the only areas in the entire state. The other area's on the other side in Polk County. We don't know what they're doing, but it wouldn't be bad to have two places, but I think we have a responsibility in our community to make sure that that happens. That would be something for the entire state to have opportunity for wildlife crossings. Around I-4 everywhere else is pretty heavy development that would not allow that to happen anywhere else to the east. So that, and the other, and that's also the area of, I guess, Baker Creek. I remember that there was floodplains in there and whatever, so that might be a focus for that.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you very much. I've made no secret about the fact that I support the idea of strategic expansions of the urban service area in places like the I-4 corridor. of the urban service area in places like the I-4 corridor. But I'm of the opinion that procuring TDR credits should be mandatory in order to do so. I've been told that folks won't want to, to do this because they've traditionally been able to come in and, and just get the expansion or, or just, just get the amendment to the comprehensive plan. But I think it's time to chart a new course and say that as we do look at these expansions, you know, we have to see participation in something like a TDR program. In fact, I'm of the opinion that any time an applicant asks for any significant increase in density, even inside the existing urban service area, that procuring TDR credits be mandatory. And I'm, I'm, I'm of course talking about increasing density in the context of comprehensive plan amendments, not at the rezoning level pursuant to the existing comprehensive plan categories. Significant is obviously a subjective term, and staff would have to help us to bring objectivity to that. So, for example, if an applicant asks to increase their comprehensive plan entitlements in an area that's Res 3 and maybe they're asking for Res 4, I think we all know that, you know, participating in a TDR program is probably not going to work in that scenario. But I certainly think that staff could help us with the objectivity and, and, and set the bar, you know, for any significant request for increase in density and really help us to start to, to kickstart this TDR program, which I'm, again, a firm believer is, is a win-win program for urban landowners, rural landowners, everyone across the board, so that everyone has a chance to participate in a marketplace while at the same time fostering better, more sustainable growth. Thank you.
Okay. I'll move now to 12-month work programs, addressable OCC policies initiatives.
Great.
Commissioners, we have worked with staff in multiple departments in the world of breaking down silos, with economic development, with public works, utilities, the infrastructure and community planning team, budget, and of course with MPO and the Planning Commission on identifying what initiatives might need to be addressing some of these. So what's important here is this is a lot, there is a significant amount of work that we're tackling in this next 12-month period, but what is significant here, like the I-4 corridor, if there is something you think is not on the table for us, you need to help us understand that now would be better. And then if there is something that's critically missing, I think that's an important piece to include as well. So I will spend, we'll spend a little more time on these because I think it's an important component to understand, but we've broken it down in environmental, fiscal, infrastructure, and redevelopment, land development code and process, and then mobility and Vision Zero. There's no magic to these categories except that they naturally broke out this way. So to the topic of wildlife corridors, we, we are updating our current wildlife corridor map. And then that becomes, it will now become an absolute layer of consideration as we look at any capital projects, any road project, et cetera, and be figured into the analysis and feasibility. The next one is the septic-to-sewer conversion program. I think you've heard from George on some of the priorities. And so initiating that on the ground this year is, is one of the things that we're committing to. In the fiscal side, these first three bullets really deal with things that you've already discussed. So we are saying that March 4th at your board meeting, there would be a public hearing to increase the school impact fees, mobility fees, up to and including the RP-2 piece, and then the water, wastewater fees to include AGRF. So we would schedule that accordingly. The park impact fee is getting off right now, so it won't be ready for that timeline. But we believe that that is a summer timeframe, so once the technical analysis is complete, we could bring that back to you. Then as well as part of this, The Urban Economist is beginning work to look at the impact on all our fees and what would, what would the analysis look like if there were other fees included? And so that piece is underway and will be coming to you. As well, related but on a broader issue is the work that Tischler-Bice is doing on the fiscal impact of our current development patterns. What's also important as part of that is that there will be a, a piece that's being brought to you so that you can look at fiscal impact as you consider new development in your process of rezoning and comp plan amendments. So that's the fiscal component. Moving on to infrastructure and redevelopment, we're, you have, there will be an RFP for three properties going out on the street already to address the affordable housing stock. I'm not sure why that is up. Okay. But that will be coming to you as well. And so that is beginning recruitment for, and an assessment of the market response to RFPs for affordable housing on sites that we currently own. This next item is the one I alluded to earlier, that we would undertake an analysis, a technical analysis of those three nodes in the I-4 corridor, looking at specifically environmental infrastructure and any development feasibility before we move anywhere else, is just understanding what's there. So it's not making recommendations to do anything, it's really analyzing. The next set of, the next work project that we have is again, an infrastructure assessment and really looking at these areas that we've identified, at the 56th Street area, downtown Brandon, the North Airport area, University, Palm River, and Ruskin-Wy Mama. And these are, again, technical analysis of, you know, is the, what is the stormwater situation for potential redevelopment? Where do we have sidewalk gaps? Where can we make points of connectivity? Can we undertake a program of connecting pieces of roadways that are easy to connect? These would be the areas that we would be focusing on in the next year. The other is the low-pressure system as well, and then like the septic-to-sewer, beginning the work on the, identifying the priorities for the conversion of the LPSS to our county's wastewater system. And then the next one is one that's been identified by affordable housing to really look at CDBG money and how we can use that for revitalization in, in target areas. And Cheryl would be bringing something back to you in summertime. In the land development code and the process itself, you have, we have heard a lot about minimum density, so we are now gearing up to bring back land development code amendments on minimum densities. And so that process is beginning. I think that addresses some of the issues, also not just the minimum density itself, but the connectivity and interconnectedness. The next item is one that is emerging, and we are hearing much about it in working with the school board for citing new schools. The way the inter-local agreement with the school board is written right now is it actually does not require this board or, or the school board to really approve the location of the site. So the school board approves the contract for purchasing a school site. But because schools are so critically important into how this community develops and connections to communities and such, we believe that a fundamental change to the inter-local agreement with the school board would be to have both, both the school board and this board approve the actual location. Mike has spoken before to this group and, and with staff, with school board staff, about finding the right location. And if that means that it requires some additional funding, that may be a small price to pay for some of the costs that we incur then in fixing roads and adding infrastructure and sidewalks, and then trying to retrofit a school to make it compatible to communities and walkability and all of the other issues that are important to you. The other one that we have heard is the land development code to prohibit new subdivisions that would be served by septic tanks. So that would be the first item and the second, and this third item, our land development code changes. The other piece that we've heard is the oral argument conversation about who can speak at oral argument. And we know that there's been conversations before, but we think we need to do a hardcore look at that and bring recommendations back to you on that piece as well. One other item that we've heard is how can we tell in a rezoning process what's going on around us, what's been approved? How can the OSBR know, but how can we not know? So there is a system underway, and we believe that it can be launched for your March land use meeting that will allow you to see what some of the development approvals are in the surrounding areas. So maybe a soft launch, but it will be a launch. The other one is the one that we've just talked about in here as well, and that's the transfer development right program, really geared toward preserving the agricultural and rural areas, and then finding the appropriate destination zones for, for those. So there is a consultant already underway who is looking at how some of that might work and doing some of the initial work on that. And then the last two items deal with the two that you've already approved that deal with land development code amendments to RP-2 and the Wy Mama Village two categories. The last category of work here identifies some of the mobility and Vision Zero items. One of the quick fixes, we had a major brainstorming session with staff, and one of the first ones that came out was, let's just start by painting the bike lanes green. So we're starting a paint, Paint Your Heart Out program for bike lanes and beginning to paint bike lanes green to make them more visible for bicyclists. And then as part of the, really, the Gibsonton area road improvement, but tandem with some of the work that DOT is doing, to really start looking at this different kind of analysis of how does the road and the neighborhood begin to work together? So there is a community plan there, and so I think it begins to tie road improvements, road expansions to some of the community interests, and in tandem then again with the work that DOT is, is, is thinking about there. The next one someone alluded to earlier is the trails piece. So we have a trails implementation plan. Little by little, we're making pokes and prods and, and building pieces of it. But one of the key differences in trails now is that we're looking at them as truly mobility corridors and not merely recreational. So they will continue to provide a recreational piece to it. But as we do road extensions and expansions, what we're looking at is where's the connection to the nearest trail? So that it now begins to form a different kind of network that is connected with walkability in some cases, but certainly for cyclists. A safety lighting needs analysis, and especially in intersections that are unsignalized, is already kicking off, so that is underway. And, and then an analysis of heart bus stop, so working with heart and really understanding where these safety features are. The next one too, we've heard quite a bit about, is a speed management study. All of these, I might add, are components that deal with, that address Vision Zero. Because it is about safety, it's about reducing fatalities, it's about reducing pedestrian and bicyclist and, and automobile fatalities. So all of these are feeding into a Vision Zero agenda that you have. We've talked about school speed and making improvements about, around schools with sidewalks. This one now is going to introduce the speed around schools as a component of it. These last two items though, I think, are the ones that deal with some of the technical documents that we have that we're working with. And I think I'll talk about them together. Because there's a corridor preservation plan, there is an access management plan, and there's a technical, a technical manual for how we design roads. All of those really need to feed together so that we understand the road network, where the brakes in the driveways are, who accesses how, how that feeds the grid, does it feed the grid? Does it enhance the grid? Does it not enhance the grid? And then looking at our technical manual, making sure that we make the appropriate changes. And so your concern that we hear sometimes about too many exceptions to, to the technical manual, really studying that to see, what are those exceptions that have been requested? Where do they fall in the, in the sort of spectrum of reasonableness? Where do they compromise if they do some of the concerns that you may have about safety? So it's undertaking all three of those at once and beginning that work as well. So those are the, the initiatives that you have your staff on county administrator's side. I think what's really important is that none of this travels without the Planning Commission and the MPO. We had a really good meeting with Planning Commission and MPO and our own staff two days ago about some of the corridors, the Vision Zero quarter analysis that's going, that will be undertaken with the money that this board has allocated to the MPO in last year's budget. So that is really a very collaborative, cooperative initiative about how do the operational pieces fit with some of the broader range of recommendations? And it is, I think, moving forward and will continue to be addressed this year. So those are the initiatives that you have on the county administrator's side. Open to any questions, thoughts? If not, we'll, Melissa take it with those compatible initiatives and the Planning Commission's side. I think the idea of, and I'm not sure who raised it, but bringing these together is a really good thought because they really are. I think we just worked hard to get them out to you. So next will be the, the merging of them.
Before we get to questions, we're gonna let you do your-
Okay. Great. Thank you. So we have a companion work program, and many of the things are going to overlap or fit together with what Lucia just described. So the first item on our list is to conduct the countywide outreach, which I'll go over a little bit more in depth after this, regarding future growth issues and getting some understanding of public sentiment on those. Then at your request from several of these workshops has been to hold a joint meeting of the county with the three cities to discuss those growth issues. So we would be pulling that together as well. Then based on the two moratorium, we're working on a study of the RP-2 land use category as well as a study of the Wy Mama Village land use category and an update of the Wy Mama Community Plan with recommendations coming back to you all, we hope, by May. We would have been working with the Economic Development Department on some draft policies to the comprehensive plan related to retention of competitive sites and incentivizing job creation uses. So could bring those back as plan amendments. We have been working with the county on the community, community vulnerability study, and that will conclude this year. It's in Phase 3, and there will be plan amendments that would be initiated based on the results of that study. Then we've, I think Ms. Garsis has spoken before about the One Water Initiative, and there are a number of amendments to the comprehensive plan to bring together the stormwater, potable water, and wastewater elements, as well as components of the conservation and coastal management elements that we would bring forward as part of that initiative. We have been working with Hart and the City of Tampa and the county on their implementation of a grant they received from the Federal Transit Administration on transit-oriented development. And that would be, is specifically looking at station area planning, first at the extension of the streetcar, and then at the bus rapid transit along the Florida-Nebraska corridors up to Fowler. And so we would be looking at some station area planning and then what needs to go into the comprehensive plan or into the land development codes to make those station area plans work. We have begun and are working on a Gibsonton community profile, which updates much of the data- the data and analysis that supports their community plan and gives them sort of a new baseline to understand the trends and demographics that have been occurring in their community. Any work that's done on the transfer development rights, we would certainly support that with any needed plan amendments. Similarly, we've been working on looking at the housing element of the comprehensive plan and would work with the Affordable Housing Department, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board on needed amendments there to implement things like density bonuses or other incentives into the comprehensive plan. As Ms. Garsis mentioned, the MPO is studying some of the high crash corridors to look at some quick fix Vision Zero oriented improvements to those, and we would be collaborating with them to make sure the land use context of those roadways is considered. We would continue to follow up on the analysis we began on minimum densities. We looked just at the last year of rezoning cases and how that was implemented. We'd like to look further back and see if there are some things that we could collaborate with Development Services on how to better implement minimum density. Likewise, similarly connectivity as an issue, some evaluation of both what's in the plan, and then that bleeds right into the code and vice versa, making sure they, those two documents support each other on that issue. Updates to the conservation element, solid waste and coastal management elements could be initiated within this year. We'd also like to begin collaborating with the county staff and other agencies on other needed elements to the land use and transportation elements outside of the ones that are mentioned on this list. And then lastly, supporting the work on nodes, such as the one that has been, there's been some focus on the, the nodes in Brandon, and fleshing out what needs to be done from a policy side to support the redevelopment and infill in a node such as that. And that, that concludes my list.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Obermann, you recognize?
I recently asked for, and I haven't read it all the way through yet, so I may not be asking the right question, but the, what, where, where in our land code are our transit-oriented development policies? And if we have any inclusionary zones, how are we considering opportunity zones and CRAs or TIF zones as it, as it comes into our growth plan? So I don't know where that would fit in here.
Sure.
But in your, the section, I guess, of the 12-month work plan where we're talking about land development codes and process, maybe it falls under there? Or in the, the, the second part where you're talking about the 12-month plan and we're discussing land, land code and process there, too?
Yeah.
Those are tools that are in our toolbox that aren't incorporated in this consideration. And I think if we're gonna be talking about TDRs and where we're gonna grow and transit and how it matches up with affordable housing, those are important tools we can use. And then I understand the fiscal, the things that come with it that can guide our partners, our business partners, you know, our business owners and our developers, guide them into saying, hi, if you wanna do this here, let's do it here. And they, they can then reap the benefits of, of our planning. So I didn't see it anywhere in here. I'm not sure where it goes, but I think it goes in the land code section.
Yeah, I think it's a part of both of our work programs to, to look at how it's appropriate to incorporate each of those tools, depending on what the goal is. It might be more in one document or another.
Yeah, 'cause it doesn't appear, just from my glance, that we have inclusionary zones or TOD zones anywhere already established. Is that correct?
We do, we do have policies on transit-oriented development in the comprehensive plan. The only areas that in today's plan it would apply would be along the sort of Fowler-Bruce B. Downs corridor where that goes into the unincorporated area. But much of that was written in 2010, before many of the tools you just mentioned were available or were contemplated by this board, and so that's absolutely part of what we should be revisiting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I have a whole, we hit so many things there that I just have some questions about a bunch of different things. In terms of the, you said the RFPs are prepared for the affordable housing and ready to go out?
They are being prepared.
Yeah, 'cause I'd be curious to see those. So I don't, when, when they're ready, I wanna just know what the scopes are. The second question I have is March 4th, you said about the impact fees coming forward in the March 4th agenda? Okay. I know we had that letter from Jeff Ekins, and as far as the schools go, so when you say that they're coming forward, is staff going to have a resolution prepared for us to consider that day?
So the intent would be to bring back a request for public hearing at the board meeting prior, and so that would be on February the 19th, and then to bring back the actual public hearing itself on the 4th of March.
Oh, okay. Thank you. The other is, and I've asked this before, I just, it just happened to come to my mind, the city and most cities are looking at requirements for parking or the, the requirements that have been in codes forever. I'm not familiar with what's in the county code with regards to this, when there's shopping malls or whatever else, if we're requiring that. Sometimes it's been a barrier, and now it's being very looked, you know, looked at in urban type areas, and we certainly have some of those. So I'd just be curious about what our code is, and maybe if we should be rethinking that, if it's requiring maximum parking and, you know, having that be, in some cases, a decision for the developer of the, or owner of the property. I'd just like to get some consideration and knowledge about that. As far as the technical design manual, I know we're looking over that again. I'd always thought it was imposed from the state or the, the feds or something like that, but as I understand, it is our Hillsborough County Technical Design Manual with the roads.
Yes, it is, has a basis in using some of the DOT standards, but it is a local manual.
Well, I would also like to really look at the design exceptions, and I would also like a legal analysis in terms of the design exceptions, because I know it's now deferred to staff, but I'm wondering if design exceptions should really be the purview of the board to be making, and how, and I'd just like some idea of how that goes. It would just seem to me that, you know, I always think that it's all bundled up already, and a staff decision. I really think that, I'd like to look at some other models for doing that, or how it's done, or where. I just, I would like to understand that better in terms of now that we're looking at the manual. And then the, I think that's, yeah, I think that's everything. I guess the only thing, the only comment I have is the TOD study. It doesn't sound, from heart or here, it's, it doesn't sound like it's truly a TOD study. I was wondering what they were gonna be studying. It's a stop study, I mean, a bus stop or station study. It's not, which, you know, I mean, there's a big station downtown, Marion Street, and it hasn't really inspired TOD. So I just, so, so I'm glad to have that clarification, because I thought it was going to be something somewhat different from that, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me ask a question of Ms. Garsis. The Affordable Housing RFP, who puts together the scope of work on that?
I think I would like Cheryl to address that one.
She's not here.
She's not here.
Yes, so Bonnie, Bonnie, Ron Barton and Cheryl are drafting it, have been drafting it, and are still drafting it. So it's not really in a form yet to bring to you, but it was anticipated we would bring it to the board before we released it, so it's, it's in process.
And, and the board would be the one that will, are we gonna approve the scope of work there? What's, what's the reason for it? Tell me why we bring it to the board?
Well, because it has a lot of implications in a lot of different areas, and so, and we wanted to incorporate in the RFP. So the RFP focuses on three pieces of property that the county owns, and as a starting point, because that's a big part of the cost of affordable housing is the land.
Cheryl, I'm not really asking the question about everything you have in there. My concern, and probably wanna ask Ms. Beck this question, individual commissioners getting involved and what the scope of work is, are we crossing into a dangerous area by doing something like that?
Well, we haven't been engaging individually with commissioners. We were playing and bringing it back to the board for the board's review, but.
I just wanna make sure, because we don't wanna get ourselves into a deep jam here, where we start nitpicking every RFP that comes out, because I wanna see, commissioners wanna see what it is before it comes to the full board. That could be construed as really, really getting, diving into this dangerous area. Am I correct?
We, we always try to encourage a nice separation with the procurement policies, but we have no objection to bringing the scope back to the full board.
Well, we've done it before.
Yeah, we've done it plenty.
I mean, so it's not a question of you encouraging or discouraging it. The fact is, we have, by board direction, brought back RFPs for your review.
For the full board?
Yes, so solid waste, and you go down the list of things. But, so for example, in this RFP, there are, as I said, three pieces of land, and, and some of, in order to make them really viable affordable housing sites, there will have to be rezonings. We just want to know that before we march down the road of asking people to respond and not know whether the board is willing to do the rezonings, it's just wasting people's time. So that's why I wanted to give the example.
That's, I understand that, that it comes before the full board. My concern is we start giving it to one individual commissioner, and, and everything starts getting nitpicked in there. That's puts a dangerous precedent. I think that legally puts us in a dangerous precedent of doing something like that. So I just wanna make sure we lay that groundwork out there.
No, no, you're, that's correct, right.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And going back to that, I, I'll go back to my previous statement about affordable housing and the rezonings. I do think the county attorney should look at some kind, bringing something back to us with options for how we can address that, because obviously, you're probably gonna do something that has a little bit larger density to it than what probably what's approved, and why do we need to put ourselves through that whole, you know, deal when, when we know we're gonna approve it because it's right and it's been vetted and screened and all that kind of stuff? So we'll go back to that, but I do think the county attorney should come back to us with some kind of options. I just have a few questions. Septic to sewer, we're gonna start with Gibsonton, right? I won't let it go.
We're gonna start with Gibsonton, Commissioner.
Okay, I'm looking out there. Oh, staff, oh, they ran away.
They knew you were gonna ask something, that's why they ran.
Get back in here.
They're hiding in the closet over there.
George knows, I call him about, what, once a day? In fact, he just gave us, do you know how long it takes to do, well, septic to sewer, but even the sewer conversion in Gibsonton? It will take eight years. It will take five years just to construct it. So y'all, we gotta get ahead of this thing.
Commissioner Murman, how long it take to get the water to Palm River? What you think it's gonna take?
I know, I know, and I keep thinking back to Palm River. You're right. Remember the guy bringing the jar in with colored water?
That was 2010.
I know it. So, so we're gonna get ahead of the game, and I know we'll have a good result on that one. I guess, okay, we mentioned a joint meeting with the cities, so, you know, I keep hearing from the city that they don't want any real, they don't want a lot more density coming in, but, so I do think that that meeting is critically important, that we just don't talk about it, play a game, play a game on this issue. I have heard it. You know, and I think, like, if you could just tell us what the plan for the conversation's gonna be as we go down.
Yes, I think the first thing is trying to figure out a time that we can get you all together, but yes.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
We'll work towards an agenda and share that with you all.
The other issue is on the, okay, the school siting. You have to include charter schools in approving the new school sites. So when a charter school application comes in, that has to be treated, I think, almost the same as a Hillsborough County School Board school site. Because honestly, if y'all wanna know the issue, when that charter school opened up in Wadertown, 800 students, and Big Ben was already a problem, and it exacerbated that problem way more, and we didn't even know, and we really didn't know. So I really feel very strongly about this, that I, I don't know what purview we have over it, but I, at least when it comes before us for approvals, that we, that we at least have the information about transportation, infrastructure, all that kind of stuff. Okay, I did that, okay, the, I'm still worried about this reality of population growth getting incorporated into the outreach, but are you going to do that, incorporate it into the outreach?
Yes.
And then the last issue is TDRs. So I've been studying this because I really wanna, I know it's in our comprehensive plan right now, right?
It is.
And, and I guess I wanna know why it's never been used. And maybe you could come back at a different time and kinda give us maybe, and what kind of policy are we going to have around that? Because, you know, there's a, you know, the receiving people, then you've got the sending people, and who's gonna be in charge of the credits? Is the county gonna be the bank again, just like we were for mobility fees? I mean, there's a lot of different issues attached to this, and I, I just wanna make sure that we don't repeat some, some things that we've done in the past, like mobility. I'd hate to see us do this program and us be in a position where we have to, again, go to market, go with a discount, you know, go to an auction to sell these credits because they aren't being used, and go through that whole thing again. I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, and how the actual implementation is going to work that's far different than just sitting here talking about it as a, as a tool and toolbox. I'm not opposed to this, I just wanna see how it's gonna work. And that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. Commissioner Murman, I appreciate your concerns, and I'll just state for the record that I am under no illusion that TDR programs are easy. They are incredibly complex tools, but I'm confident that our staff and consultants can put together a meaningful program. As I understand TDR programs from a 30,000-foot view, and I'm certainly not an expert on TDRs, but I cannot imagine a scenario where the county would be left holding the bag on any unused TDR credits, because it's a direct transfer from sender to receiver. It's possible that the free market economics might not work, and you just don't have receivers procuring TDRs from senders, but I think it's worth a try, and we can cross that bridge when and if we, we get there, from a free market perspective. Lucia, a question for you. You had mentioned that you have downtown Brandon on your list to take a look at earlier. How are you defining that? How are you defining downtown Brandon?
Right now, the area that we've looked at originated actually as a transit-oriented development for BRT along State Road 60. So it would be south of State Road 60, I think Parsons to the east, probably Lakewood on the west, and Lumston on the south is the area that we're working with it.
If staff's okay with it, both, both county staff and Planning Commission staff, and of course, if there's consensus from the board, I, I would like to ask that, that we take a look at two things. One is just what you talked about, the State Road 60 slash Brandon Boulevard corridor, but in But in the past, I've also talked about those Oakfield and Robertson corridors between Parsons and Kings. I know I've mentioned a gastro district idea in the past, but I'm not married to that idea. I would just like to see something to make those corridors more vibrant, because I think there's so much potential there. I think there's great potential for a pedestrian-friendly environment, and perhaps, you know, something that might draw people into that area in the evening time. We really have some great restaurants right now, by the way, in that corridor. You know, it's, it's just, there's just, there's just not really any type of an anchor, though, or something to draw people there in the evening time, to put those resources, those private free enterprise resources to better use. And, and I'm not opposed with trying to somehow dovetail a concept in to the, to the medical theme that you already see in that corridor. You know, it's a medical hub by day and fill-in-the-blank by night, you know, and that's really up to our experts, but there's just so much potential there that I just don't see unlocked at this point. And the final question, Ms. Ornita, would be for you. I don't know how quickly you can get your presentation back up, if that's possible, but you ended your presentation with some tables. If you could go back to the RP2 and WVR2, this might just be me just not understanding what the table means, but I'm curious to know why we don't have the environmental sustainability and economic sustainability columns checked for RP2 and WVR2.
Yeah, so we probably, we absolutely could have. A lot of these studies overlap the different categories. We were looking at it fitting within the area of the social sustainability that focused on creating a sense of place in the urban rural, and making sure there was good design and, and that aspect of it. That's what we focused on here, but absolutely, there will be environmental components to both of those studies. Economic, in terms of creating jobs to work with the residential, so we could have checked all of them.
Okay.
It was a hard decision.
All right, but we're certainly going to, I know we're not doing any of this in a vacuum, but we're certainly going to take a look at those...
Yes, sir.
Those categories. Thank you.
Yes, sure.
Okay, I'm going to call on Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Kemp, Overman, and Merman, y'all have a sidebar with staff, because we're supposed to get out here at 3:00, okay? So we'll call on Commissioner Smith, and ask staff, when we have the rest of these workshops, take them from 1:30 to 3:30, two hours, okay? No, it's only to 3:00, from 1:30 to 3:30. So Smith, Commissioner Smith, we'll call on you, and others have a sidebar with staff.
Right, because I'm round one still.
You're still round one?
Right. That's right. So, thank you. And if you each do your 12, everything that's on your 12-month plan in the next 12 months, I think we will be very happy to have a lot to brag to our constituents about actually getting a lot, a lot done that people have been talking about. I have not only comments in throughout this, but smiley faces throughout, and, and thank you for those. Okay, the, the, your development services, Hillsborough County work plan, the first thing under environmental wildlife corridors, and, and this might need to be added back to the policy, but significant wildlife habitat, I think, goes with corridors, because you're connecting them, but we have, you know, official definitions and maps of significant wildlife habitat based on the kinds of soils and plants and animals that are there. So, you know, I'd want to just make sure that that might be, as you're updating wildlife corridors, we might need to be updating significant wildlife habitat maps and policies and, and codes to really be protecting those moving forward as, as things get even more vulnerable. For, for example, I think we are scrub jays and burrowing owls have been with us for a long time, and, and they are maybe no longer in Hillsborough County. And gopher tortoises, I'm understanding are, as we move those to accommodate development and relocate them, we're even relocating them outside the county. And I'd really like to see if there's ways to make sure that we protect these, these, these species that are iconic for Florida. The scrub jay is endemic to Florida, it's found nowhere else. The...
It's a snakebird.
Yeah, the, well, right, I know, I wish it was the state bird, but the point is...
We had a fight about a scrub jay in this legislature, I tell you.
The point is...
It's not the state bird, it should be.
It's, these are natural resources. So it, back to the, you know, the policies, I think we, we might put them in, and, and also in, in considering this, we consider teeth and, and codes that can protect these natural resources while, you know, while doing the corridor stuff. The infrastructure assessments that is on the infrastructure and redevelopment, I'm just, would like to highlight that, that resilience should be, you know, a key point. I'm sure, I'm sure that would be in there. And the capital improvement program under the Mobility and Vision Zero, I think they're, yeah, we would want to be, so I, I get you there, I'm pleased about that. Adding, you know, mobility as well as recreation. And I just want to also say, you know, I'm very happy and optimistic that we are finding a lot of consensus on this board, and I'm seeing a lot of head nodding at each other's points. I completely agree with the school siting scene, if there's any way we can, we can also, you know, apply the same concerns to charter schools as public schools. TDR is going to be a heavy lift and a tough thing, but I think Hillsborough County could lead the way and be a model for other places if we get this figured out. I think we just had a comp plan amendment that, that was, it just handed density to the university area, 23 units an acre, that it would have been, it would have been great if we could have found that density somewhere else in a, in a TDR program. So, you know, I'm just really excited by what everybody is sharing. We do have some chafing points to work out. I-4 corridor is something I'm hoping we will prioritize the node that is closest into the urban service area before looking farther out, but all in all, I'm, I'm really happy that the things that are going to be, we've got a lot of common ground, a lot of work, things that are going to be coming back are very exciting to me, so, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, we've got some powder for that shaving, we're shaving, we're going to take care of it. Yeah, I like that one, huh? Outreach.
Okay.
Swiftly.
Yes, very quickly here. I've just got two slides. So the first is on the community outreach on countywide growth issues, and we have been talking with HCP, the firm that did the quality of life survey for you all over the last summer, and, and Robert Allen from their team is here, if there are specific questions regarding the methodology. But what we are proposing is to get a broad-based understanding of public sentiment on growth issues by focusing on a two-pronged approach, one that gets at some quantitative feedback that is targeted to the unincorporated area, and this would be through a statistically significant survey of random, of a random sample of unincorporated area citizens on these growth questions. And then we would follow that with some drilling down into some qualitative questions through some focus groups that similarly would be randomly selected from the unincorporated area, but specifically might target populations who we don't hear from often, minority populations, perhaps a focus group focused on the rural area, since so many of these issues relate to that geography. So we believe that this approach would allow us to get a good cross-section of the community, hear from folks who you might not always hear from, and specifically keep it to the geographies where this policy document would be directly impacting them, the unincorporated area. The timeline to do both of those would be that we would have the results by the end of May. And then, of course, as we go into specific policy issues that might impact a geographic area, or have a specific constituency, we would do other outreach, but this is just an initial broad, kind of barometer on how folks are feeling on these issues, and making sure that based on what you have put together, that we're on the right track with the community sentiment. So the other piece regarding outreach that I was asked to bring back was on the RP2 and the Y-Mama outreach that we're doing in those areas, and we're using parallel processes for both studies. We've been working on these with development services as they impact both the comprehensive plan and the land development code. But we have started a demographic and real estate market analysis of both areas. The same consultant is doing all of that work, and because the geographies are side by side, and they have conducted stakeholder interviews and interviews with many of you all in the last few weeks. The next steps will be that each of those community efforts will have separate community-wide kickoff meetings that will be more of an open house format. In the Y-Mama area, we will notify all property owners within the Y-Mama community plan boundary, as we will, we're anticipating this being an update to the Y-Mama community plan. In the RP2 study, we will be notifying all property owners who have the RP2 land use category in the rural area. And then, after that kickoff, we will have, be utilizing a charrette process to vet and develop recommendations with the community. That's a very interactive process of getting feedback from the community in a short period of time, and given the length of the moratorium, that time is of the essence. All of that would then come back for a second open house, where they would have the opportunity, the community, those same sets of property owners would all get notified by direct mailing, and they would get to see the sort of final draft recommendations and provide feedback on that. All of this with the goal of having recommendations back to you all in May, so that we could then conduct plan amendment and land development code hearings to be concluded in the August-September timeframe in accordance with the moratorium. So it's an aggressive timeframe, but we believe it will get input from all of the stakeholders in those areas. And that completes what I have on outreach.
Okay. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you know, do you have any idea how you're going to do the surveys? Is it going to be by phone, mail, or...
Yes, I apologize for not mentioning that. Yes, this, the survey in the countywide, unincorporated survey would be a phone survey. That is the...
Phone.
...gold standard, so to speak.
Good, good. And do you know what the sample size is going to be?
Robert will help me with that, hopefully. Thank you.
Good afternoon. We're currently targeting 1,300.
What was that again?
1,300.
In total?
Oh, okay. That's a good number.
It should be a very robust sample.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry? I'm Robert Allen from HCP Associates, hey.
And do you know how many focus groups you're going to have?
Between two and three, it has yet to be determined.
Two and three?
Yes, ma'am.
Think that's enough?
Focus groups are typically about quantifying opinions of a specific group, and it's not so much about measuring everybody, it's about getting more qualitative, qualitative information rather than quantitative information. So we would want to rely on our quantitative study of the 1,300 to give large-scale measurements of opinion.
And then how will you decide who gets in the focus groups? Will you use voter rolls, or...
That's, that's typically our basis, and then there would typically be a series of questionnaires. In focus groups, you typically tend to exclude individuals who are involved in PR and other sort of public relations professions. There's a couple of other practices, but the voter rolls would form the basis of that list. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, and before you have a seat, so you, you had, you, you had, let me ask Melissa first. You, you had mentioned maybe doing a rural community focus group? That'll be one of the focus groups?
That, that is in our discussion, something that, that came up, and we thought would be a good idea, particularly given the nature of the policy discussion you've been having.
So here, here's my question. I'm not a statistician, I don't plan to be, but, or don't, don't pretend to be, rather, but this has always been my issue with citizens in rural communities. If, if you look at the ratio of citizens to large landowners, in a place like downtown Tampa, that ratio is infinitely large. When you move out to some of the areas in the far eastern and southeastern portions of my district, I mean, that number, that ratio approaches one, you know what I mean?
Sure, yeah.
So, how are we going to address that issue as we're, as we're conducting these focus groups?
Well, frankly, it's just by calling more people.
Okay.
The simple matter is, is we, we have a sample that we want to target. We're going to take that 1,300 figure and essentially identify all of the communities, divide that number into some sort of even grouping, and then we're going to be continuing to call people per the voter rolls until we get everyone that we need. That's, that's the short of it.
I, I would just ask you to remember that there are parts of my district where if you talk to 10 people, I mean, they could be representative of many square miles.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, so, I just, I just don't want them to be forgotten or lost in this conversation, because their voices are important. Because we all know that large landowners have the resources, you know, to, to get things done in this complex machine, and it's those, it's those 10 people that might represent, from a citizen perspective, many square miles. I, I want to make sure their voices are...
To, to your point, I, I think we always ask a handful of demographic-related questions in any survey that we ask. We typically would not ask about land ownership, but in the case of, that you're mentioning, I think that would be a very appropriate question, and therefore, we'd be able to segment our results based on whether, what their answers were to that.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Merman?
Anything else, Melissa? Nope, I think we're done.
Three minutes early. We adjourned.